Good afternoon and welcome. Today is Monday, March 25th, 2024. This is our weekly Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources work session. Our main topic is to hear from our colleagues from the Department of Natural Resources regarding visitor services, presentation, updates, and all of that. So, oh, I should introduce myself and the rest of us, shouldn't I? So, on good days, my name is John Cofalas, Laramie County Commissioner, District One, joined by my Commissioner colleagues, Kristin Stevens from District Two and Jody Shadak-McNally from District Three. Of course, we have our county manager, Loretta Volker, and at this time, I believe, I'll turn it over to Leslie, and she can introduce herself, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Leslie Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director. And I'm very happy to pass this along here in a moment to Chris Fleming. She and her team, and she'll introduce the team here at the table and behind the scenes who worked on this presentation, but I think you'll be very impressed with the presentation and update from our team that keeps our parks and our open spaces and our reservoirs safe and well-maintained and all that. So, take it away, Chris, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Chris Fleming, Visitor Services Division Manager for the Department of Natural Resources. And with me today, I've got Senior Ranger Lain Farrenbrook from the Big Thompson District and District Manager Cindy Claggett from the Carter Lake District. And we have a special guest. We have Laramie County Under Sheriff Joe Schellhammer, and of course, our Director, Daylon Figs. And today, we're going to spend probably about half an hour and give you an update over the last two years of what the Visitor Services program has been up to. And I'm going to turn it over to my very capable team here.
And if I may, before we begin with your presentation, what is your preference in terms of questions as we go along or at key places in the presentation? Or your slide presentation says "questions" at the very end. So how would you like it?
I think if there's a relevant question to a particular topic or slide, feel free to ask it. Otherwise, we do have time allotted at the end for additional questions.
Okay. Great. Thank you kindly.
Great. So also give credit to two folks that couldn't make it today that did a lot of work with this presentation with us. So Jake Cotilly is one of our maintenance technicians. If you are looking at a slide and you think it's amazing, it was probably one of the ones he designed. He's really good at that. And then Garrett Thompson, he's one of our Ranger Twos at Horse Tooth District that also worked on this, wouldn't be able to be here today. So, all right, we'll get started. All right. So this is the Visitor Services section of the Natural Resources Department. So who we are, we have 23 full-time employees. There are some various titles that you see up there that they would hold. We hire approximately 140 seasonal or temporary employees to make this beast run, and those are the various titles that they have up there. And then, of course, we couldn't do what we do without our volunteers. The different groups of volunteers that we work with, hello, Sheriff, are the camp hosts primarily, and the volunteer ranger assistants are VRAs. And so we'll go into a little depth with some of these different groups. And just for fun, we mix up our district boundaries all the time. So this is our current district boundary map. Pink there is Horse Tooth District, so obviously Horse Tooth Reservoir, Horse Tooth Mountain Open Space, Soderburg, Blue Sky, Lions, Bingham Hill, Red Mountain, and Eagle's Nest. And then the Big Thompson District in blue there encompasses Hermit Park, the Fishing Access Canyon properties that we have, as well as our joint property with the City of Loveland, the V Smith Park there, Devil's Backbone, of course, and whatever it will be named in the future. Heaven Store will be included in that district, Rim Rock Open Space, Longview, and River Bluffs as well. And then the Carter Lake District there, Pine Wood Reservoir, Flatiron, Chimney Hollow, Carter Lake, and Red Tail Ridge are encompassed in that one. So I like this nerdy little graph because it basically shows you the parking spaces that we have available at each of the districts. And though, speaking for Carter Lake District here, even though we're the smallest district by map, we're still comparable to the Horse Tooth traffic that we get there. So how we figured out the parking spaces for campsites, that's not the number of campsites, that's just how many vehicles in addition to maybe an RV or a trailer that we could fit passenger vehicles. So that's what we did with that. This slide shows the text messages that the visitors can sign up for to receive when we reach capacity. There's currently two text messages that people can sign up for. One is LC Boating, which basically would be around the reservoirs, whether it's our boating spaces that are filled up and we're at capacity there, or our day use at the reservoirs that is at capacity. And then the LC Open Spaces is primarily our trailheads, and when those are at capacity, we'll send a message out. So these are the 2023 numbers that were sent out. We have around 2,000 subscribers to those, and so this past year is how many messages we sent out for those Horse Tooth Open Spaces. We just kind of incorporated Horse Tooth Mountain, Open Space, Soderburg, and Blue Sky together in that large section. So it's difficult for us to come up with visitation numbers. Yeah?
Forgive me one moment. First of all, I want to acknowledge another special guest, and that is our Laramie County Sheriff, John Fane, has joined us. Appreciate that very much. And I believe our county manager had a question or a comment.
I do have a question. So how do you well-publicize the texting, the notifications? I don't think I've seen that at the parks, and 2,000 seems low compared to the number of visitors. So what are we doing to push that out?
Sure. So everything we can. So we've done news releases, we've done flyers, and we have little business cards that we hand out. Our website has it on there. What we try to do is we try to keep the messages pretty minimal so that we don't lose subscribers. But they start seeing a trend, so when they do get the messages, oh my gosh, every Saturday and Sunday around 10 o'clock, they start to realize that that's going to be a regular thing, and maybe I just shouldn't go then, and they might be pulling out of their subscription once they get the idea. I didn't have any other... I was just going to add, this was a new thing that we just started last year, and so we're still building on the subscriptions and getting the word out as well.
Thank you.
So again, it's difficult for us to get solid visitation numbers, so one of the things we can use is our permit sales. So on the left graph is our daily permits sold, 2222 and 2023, and then on the right is our annual permits. We did cut off the 2023 numbers to October 5th, so there is certainly a daily permits that aren't being accounted for there, and any Christmas gift annuals aren't accounted for there. But even with our final numbers, we are seeing a lower number than 2022. We can attribute that to several factors. One, we had, as you're aware and you'll hear several times in our presentation, as it affected our staff, is the rains that we got last year were extreme. We also, our automatic pay stations at our entrance stations where you can purchase a daily permit are nearing the end of their technological life, and we're actively working on replacing them with something else. But they were down quite a bit. We were working pretty hard at keeping those. We've replaced the innards of those things several times, and we're at the end of their life there. We're also, you know, reducing our levels of service to help try and increase the wages that we're paying our seasonals a fair wage. And so we are reducing the numbers of gate workers in the gate houses. So with our gate houses not being staffed as much and our pay stations not being running as much, doesn't necessarily mean the people aren't there, it's just that they're not purchasing the permits as much.
Yes, Commissioner.
Might be getting myself in trouble here, but I have two family permits and permits that I buy. One is for my kids. It's on the refrigerator. They're going to go up to paddleboard or do mountain bike. They come and share that. And then I have mine. I don't want to have to wait for them. So I'm just curious if that happens, you know, because they can, we can do that, right? If you have different vehicles, and so that would account for like three people. So maybe there's, some of these annual permits are, represent more than just one person. They represent families. So it's, so I don't know if that is taken into account, you know, just wondering about that in the back of my mind is if they're their families and they're, you know, sharing, especially if there's multiple drivers, that might represent two frequent users.
Yeah. I think we've done over the years, you know, studies of how many people are in cars as they come, and I think we came up with an average of about two and a half people per carload, give or take, to try and account for that. But yes, per household, transferable, you're okay.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So do you think this trend is related at all to the fact that you can get the state permit now whenever you renew your license plate? We were worried about that when that rolled out, and so you think that we're seeing that here, too?
We definitely heard about that a lot at the gate houses, and our front desk staff reported hearing a lot of questions about that, people assuming that that applied all of the parks that they want to go to. But I don't know, you know, how to measure that with that either. All right. So we'll go into our Aquatic Nuisance Species Program. I like this photo because the two folks in yellow there are kind of representing the experience that we have. I think we've been running the aquatic nuisance species 15 years-ish. And Fawn on the left there, she will be a seasonal lead for us again this summer, and she will, this will be her 14th year. So she's almost been here the entire time that the ANS program has been running. And then Jim there in the middle, he retired officially this last summer with 11 years of service. So we really appreciate that extra experience. As you can imagine, the boat inspector is trying to figure out each individual boat. Every boat's different, every nook and cranny's different, and how to decon each one. It's really valuable to have people that have been there a while. I like this graph. So it is a five-year stretch instead of the two-year, but I like this one because it's the number of boat inspections. So I'll remind you that the boat inspections are only done on trailered or motorized boats. So this is not paddlecraft in any way, shape, or form. The bottom dashed green line is 2019 pre-COVID numbers, and then the awful blue line at the top is our COVID year. So we are still seeing higher than pre-COVID, but thankfully not as high as the 2020 year. The black line is our 2023. Again, I'll attribute that spike to the rain that really didn't end until July, and then everybody wanted to come out. So how many inspections is that? So Horse Tooth had almost 40,000 inspections, boat inspections, for the summer this past 2023, and Carter Lake had 19,000. Where that sits in the state, on the top left there, is that both our business reservoirs there are top six in the state. So Colorado Parks and Wildlife, running the program, has all of their public waters that they're comparing it to, and we are still top three and top six for Horse Tooth and Carter. And then the bottom right there is talking about interceptions. So interceptions for the aquatic nuisance species are basically the boats that actually have aquatic nuisance species physically on the boat or trailer and require a further decon. And so again, Horse Tooth made that top five as number three. McPhee is just close to Lake Powell's entrance into Colorado, and then 6060 Broadway is not even a reservoir, it's the state park's headquarters, and so they ask people from out of state to just go there for their decontamination when they know they've got aquatic nuisance species. So Horse Tooth being one of the top there. And so this graph shows, the blue line is the statewide interception. So actively finding aquatic nuisance species on the boats, the green bars at the bottom is Laramie County-specific. So we did reach a record high for us in 2023. We can explain that very large peak in the blue line as, basically, everyone knows that recreation was pretty much the only activity you could do in 2020, so everyone bought boats. Well, once they bought up all the boats in Colorado, they started buying up the boats outside of Colorado. And so this really great deal they got on the boat from Michigan actually had a bunch of mussels on it, and we saw a lot more of those decontaminations needing to be done.
Yes, Commissioner, please.
Yeah, this is something I don't know a lot about. So that's, fingers pointing to what that looks like, I suppose?
I would say the largest cluster of mussels there is probably to the right of that photograph rather than, but I do think right at the tip of their finger is one of them.
Gotcha.
They're quite small.
So they're small?
Yeah.
And do a lot of folks just don't realize they have them?
Yeah.
Okay. And then what does it, what does it look like to decontaminate? Is that something that's done on the spot and then they can go in, or do they have to take off?
So most of the quick inspection, there's basically three things I'll explain. The first one is just a quick inspection at the boat ramp, figure out where the boat was last, if it's clean, drained, and dry, and doesn't come from a reservoir that we have concerns with, they get right on a couple minutes of an inspection and they're good to go. If they didn't find any aquatic nuisance species, but they did come from a reservoir or lake that we have concerns with, then they go through a quick decon down at mostly, actually be on site at Horse Tooth, hopefully in this year. And then at Carter, it's down central at our maintenance shop there. So they just drive down the hill. It's, once they get hooked up to the hose, because you can't run a motor without the water running through it to cool down the motor, I'd say five, 10 minutes tops is their quick decon. But if there is actually aquatic nuisance species, they need to make sure they get every nook and cranny figured out and where they need to put a high-temperature water on that specific area to make sure they get it all, or kill it all at least.
And that's what it takes, just high-temperature water, is that what to kill it? Okay, gotcha.
And that can, we've had decons of infested boats take up two or five days, a whole week.
Oh, jeez. Okay.
Yeah, some of them required cranes to lift off of the trailers and make sure we get under things, depending on the size of the boat.
And if I, as a quick follow-up, why is this important? What are the ecological, environmental implications if one of our bodies of water gets infected with these aquatic nuisances like the mussel?
Sure. So our reservoirs, owned by the Bureau of Reclamation, obviously the primary purpose of those reservoirs is to provide water for cities and farms. So if the infrastructure were to be flooded with some of these aquatic nuisance species that take over, it will start being a concern for us getting the water out where it needs to go. It also ecologically significantly affects the wildlife that is able to survive in the waters that are cleaned very well with these mussels, doesn't provide a lot of food for fish and other item.
Thank you. And has this occurred in Colorado? I seem to recall a couple of years ago, I thought, was it a lake in Pueblo or something that had aquatic nuisances enter the, yeah, I mean, has this happened?
Yeah, last year, they had the first infestation that was noted, and that was High Line Reservoir.
Where's that?
Good question. I think it's near, I was, Western Slope. It's a small, self-contained reservoir, and so they did a bunch of very expensive treatments where they lowered the levels of the water significantly and then used different methods to basically kill the lake, which is not an option, obviously, for our water sources. So it'd be disastrous if we were to get mussels in any of our significant bodies of water.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Let's continue.
So I'll talk about, a little bit about our maintenance team here. So our maintenance team is huge for us. Whenever they're not doing just general maintenance around the park, they're always working on projects or improvements in our areas. You can see all these photos up here, these are what Cindy was talking about by Jake. Whenever Jake's not working on a maintenance thing, he's documenting what they're doing. So we have a lot of good pictures from him. Next one here will show some of the challenges we had. We talked about rain a little earlier. 2023 was a huge rain year for us, which really affected our parks and open spaces, mainly our roads. So you can see this graph here correlates the amount of road base and tons to the inches of rain. So you can see in 2023, we used just over 400 tons of road base just in road repairs, just from road washouts. And those two photos on the right are Eagle Campground at Carter Lake, some of the roads that got washed out by our heavy rains. Some kind of at-a-glance little facts here, it's kind of cool. We used about, or mowed about 1,000 acres of grass last year, which is actually equivalent to about 769 football fields worth of grass in our parks. Restocked about 26,000 rolls of toilet paper, and on the other end of that, our maintenance crew is able to plant about 26 new trees. So we have a saying within our department, do more for less, and this is one of those stories. So that picture in the top right there, that's Rod. He's a maintenance worker, seasonal up at Hermit Park, and he's showing off his new automatic gate that they installed up there. So we got some quotes for some automatic gates for up at Hermit Park, mainly for seasonal closures and weather-related, just makes the whole process a whole lot easier and safer. The quotes we got were in excess of about $12,000 for three gates. So our seasonal, or our supervisor up there, Rick Goltz, was able to do some research and figure out, hey, we can do this on our own for a lot less. So he did a lot of research, put his team together, and they spent just under $2,800 to install three automatic gates at Hermit Park, which is about a saving of about $9,200 this year for us, or last year.
Okay, so the ranger program.
Cindy?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions on the maintenance. So going back to, you had the comparison of 2023 with all the rain, yeah, that one. I don't see anything in there about trails. I know that we close trails when there's too much rain to try to minimize or prevent some of the erosion, but what are some of the challenges related to that, or some of the costs, and how much of that did we have to, that's one question.
Okay. My first stab at that would be that the Trails Division is not within the Visitor Services, and so I'm sure that Joel will have those numbers. We just don't have them for our presentation.
Okay. Great. Then go to the next slide, please. So 26 new trees planted. What kind, what species of trees, and how do you make sure that they live? And also, what kind of lawnmower equipment are you using, given that we're trying to encourage non-combustible lawnmowers?
Yes, okay. So I don't know how many trees were planted at Skyview, but I know Skyview Campground had some trees planted. We had some volunteers coming in to water them regularly, but I don't know what species they're all used. I don't know if I have that answer for you. But anyway, so far, we've been able to keep them alive using volunteers that help us water them.
That go out and hand-water them?
Yep, hook up hoses, because most of them are around the campgrounds, and so there is water source that we can utilize. They haven't had to do the buckets from the reservoir yet. And then your second question.
How about the lawnmower equipment?
Lawnmowers, yes. I'm like, there's a reference up here. So we currently have the gas-powered. However, we've just worked with the grant from the state to get the electric motored for, I can't remember the CCs that it has, that the motors have to be under, but basically our weed eaters, those, that smaller level of motorized items are now electric or battery-operated. But our mowers are too large to meet that, so our mowers will still be gas-powered, but we are working towards getting the rest of the maintenance equipment that helps trim up some of the vegetation will be electric.
The graphic shows a push mower, but I'm, I imagine, you must have some strong maintenance folks, but I imagine you're primarily using the bigger, the rider mowers.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for answering my questions. We can keep going.
Okay. All right, so our ranger program. We have 15 fully-commissioned, post-certified rangers. We all got in one picture at once, which rarely happens, so we have to share that one without the animals this time. And then we hire approximately 35 to 45 limited-commissioned rangers to help cover our day, night, and boat shifts that we have. I wanted to highlight some of the, I don't know, force multipliers for all of the first responding agencies that are, that we work in and around. So not only are we post-certified, but a lot of our members are on peer support team, critical incident team, defensive tactics and arrest control, field training, less lethal, which is our OC pepper spray and TASER instructors and firearms instructors. We also have a driving, emergency driving instructors. We keep all of our full-time rangers at a EMT or EMR, Emergency Medical Responder level. And then we go to various trainings for low-angle rope rescues, ice rescues. We now have instructors in ice rescue, swiftwater rescue, incident command trainings, boat accident investigation for this, through the state and federal, and then certainly water survival training. So for us, you know, being in the areas that we're at, we are often the first responders to any emergency that's called out. So for us, we would like to be effective in helping until we're ready for the other resources to get there, so.
So these next few slides here kind of talk about, a little bit about body cameras. So all of our full-time employees or full-time rangers are required per state lot to wear body cameras, which is kind of cool because it gives us kind of a video fact of, hey, this is what we do, this is the places we work in. That top-left corner there is Senior Ranger Bernstein, shaking the hand of a boater after a boat safety contact at Horse Tooth Reservoir. The bottom-left corner there is out at the Devil's Backbone. It's Seasonal Ranger Victoria relocating a rattlesnake off the trail as some people were walking up and concerned about it, so. Our rangers work day and night in a variety of different conditions. Top there is Seasonal Ranger Caitlin, just talking to some visitors up at Hermit Park. Bottom there is, that's actually me, at Hermit Park at nighttime, educating some visitors on some quiet hours regulations. We work with a lot of other agencies, including Loveland Fire, Pooter Fire. Go ahead.
If I may, a question about the body cameras.
Yes.
How and where do you store the data? Is that with the sheriff's office in there?
Yep, that's all through the sheriff's office. Once it gets plugged into the dock, it's a secure system that goes straight to the sheriff's office, and they handle all of that.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. So we work with a lot of other agencies, PFA, Loveland Fire. The top-left corner there is Seasonal Ranger Gomez assisting Pooter Fire Authority on a rope rescue, looks like at Rotary Park, Horse Tooth Reservoir. And then the bottom right there is also Ranger Victoria. Again, she's a certified EMT, and she's helping a horseback rider at Horse Tooth Mountain Park that fell off and had a shoulder injury. Variety of our rescues that we have, we have a whole bunch of different things we classify as a rescue, but the majority of them are heat exhaustions and ankle injuries that we respond to. Last year alone, we had about 54 different incidents we responded to in our parks and open spaces.
One moment, please. Yes, Commissioner.
I just want to comment on this because this is, like you stated, you guys are usually first on scene, and it could be heart attacks and stuff, and I just want to make a special note, I believe it's you, Ranger Farrenbrook, forgive me if I misspelled your name.
Got it.
I got it. When I first met you, you actually had, that day, helped a gentleman who wasn't involved with a motor vehicle accident on, at the Horse Tooth Reservoir, and you saved their life, I believe, that day. And so I just wanted to make a special note of that, that you, because you're a quick response and great training and your diligence and skills, you saved a person's life. So I just want to really state that you guys, it's more than just picking at rattlesnakes, though I thank you for getting that off the trail. I won't be hiking Devil's Backbone in July, but I just wanted to say, you guys save lives. And so I just wanted to take a moment there and thank you again, because I know this happens all the time, and you guys do this every year, so thank you.
Cool. Thank you. Couple videos here just kind of shows the environments and the challenges we work in. This video here is from Ranger Bernstein at Horse Tooth Reservoir. He's trying to locate a driver of a vehicle that involved in an incident, and you tell me if you can, if you can find him.
Hi, man. Park ranger, how are you?
Good. So he was way tucked back in that corner, right on the side of a cliffside, so not everybody we talked to is just sitting in a, sitting in a camp chair, so. Next video here is out at Carter Lake. This is actually Cindy helping a stranded boater get into the dock during a storm.
All right, so we're very proud of our boat program. The state recognizes our program as being one of the top programs. The state recognizes our program as being one of the top programs as well. I'll just briefly go over the top three citations that our boat rangers might be issuing out there, very safety equipment related, things that, you know, in general, we work on a three-strike rule, right? So if there's multiple violations, we're probably going to write a citation if it's personal flotation device related or something with a child not having one on as required. So that's primarily what we focus on there. We do, we do belong to some operations throughout the year, so Operation Dry Water is very similar to the Heat Is On campaign with DUI focused around the July 4th holiday on the roads. Dry Water is equivalent to that. Operation Cliffhanger was something that the Horse Tooth crew came up with to kind of focus some enforcement on underage drinking and cliff jumping that happens quite a bit at Horse Tooth. BUI is boating under the influence, so the legal limit for boating under influence is similar to a vehicle of .08. And so it really, how boating under the influence contacts work, we really rely on a well-trained seasonal temporary employee training. They're the ones out there more regularly than our full-time staff can get out on the water, making those contacts. So we need to train them well on how to recognize it and bring it in. So 2022, we had five BUIs, 23, 14. 14 is closer to our average. And I would say statewide, including all Colorado Parks and Wildlife public waters, normally, our BUI numbers are higher than the states combined of all of their waters. It's not because it's not happening at their reservoirs, but I truly, truly think that it has to do with the training of their seasonal staff and temporary workers and just making that a priority at their reservoirs. So we really pride ourselves on that number. In addition to boat safety contacts, our rangers are also pulling people out of the water that don't want to be in the water. The difference here with boater assists versus water rescues is that water rescues if someone is in distress. So you'll see a large number of our paddle craft is categorized under the boater assists because they're not necessarily in distress, it's just that their paddleboard is now onshore and they're in the middle of the reservoir floating around, and we need to help them not get run over. So we are going to pull them onto our boat, bring them to their paddle craft so that So these statistics we've gathered from the Laramie County Sheriff's Office statistics, they are the numbers that our rangers are involved in. So the top graph there shows our calls by month, and since this is a two-year stretch, you can obviously see where the summers are. I'll explain the 2023 peak being so much higher, partly because of that whole, the rains, right? So like, people have to stay inside, have to get a little bit of cabin fever, and so once it cleared up, I feel like everybody came out at once in July. And I think our emergency services with the sheriff's office would agree that on the wetter years, we tend to have a little bit more fireworks calls. People get a little bit more loose with that. And even in the off-season, though we lose most of our seasonal staff, our rangers are still pulling in, you know, 50 to 100 calls a month. The bottom graph there I like because it's basically showing our rangers being proactive. So what this means is that if it's officer-initiated, that means the ranger was out in the park observing these things, addressing these things, or other staff members were observing these things and calling for a ranger. The dispatch one is someone that called in to Laramie County Dispatch. And so it really shows how proactive our rangers are being. We're not sitting around in the office just waiting for a call to come in. We're out there doing things. This is a heat map, basically highlighting the traffic-related incidents, and they're all kind of listed there. Again, this is just our park rangers in that stretch of time, and I just like it because you can see where Horse Tooth Reservoir is, you can see where Carter is, and you can see the Big Thompson Canyon having all of these incidents that our rangers are assisting This graph shows basically what, what top five reasons our rangers are getting on with Laramie County Dispatch for. The top reason there is traffic stops, but I want to note there that it doesn't necessarily mean that it's a driver driving on the county road that gets pulled over and stopped, although that is included in this number. But it also includes a vehicle was associated with this contact period. So that could be in a campsite. It is much easier for us to air that it's a vehicle, here's the plate number. It gives, it gives us, gives dispatch and other officers the awareness of where we are and that there's at least this identifier with us. And so we utilize the vehicles as a reason for our airing of the radio. So though it includes traffic stops, it's not entirely someone being stopped for driving behavior. And then the second one there is parks incident. How we can explain parks incident basically is, is our catch-all. It would take up a lot of radio time for us to explain some of the things that we're dealing with, multiple vehicles, people everywhere. So sometimes it's just easier for us to use this catch-all. Here's where we are, label it a parks incident, and we'll get you more information as we work through this chaos. And then I think most of our boat contacts are also, for our full-time rangers, are associated with this category as well, just because it's easier to separate it from a vehicle. Motorist assist is next. Basically, that's going to be, you know, someone that they're not necessarily being contacted for a law enforcement reason, their, you know, hood is up on the side of the road, they're parked in the middle of the road taking pictures of wildlife, something like that, where we're stopping to talk to them and check on them and make sure they don't need anything and move them off the road. Assist other agency, that's, that's basically our fire medical that also incorporates anything with the Colorado State Patrol assisting those other agencies. It encompasses all of those. Suspicious, that's just another catch-all for, I don't know exactly what's happening here, so I'm just going to call it this, and then we'll figure out from there. This graph focuses on arrests. I know we get asked a lot, what are park rangers are out there arresting people for? The, the top reason is for warrant arrests. Warrants are one of those that if it's extraditable in the location where we're at, we have no choice. We have to take them in, that is, that is required. So that is our primary number there. The red and yellow triangles there, traffic stop versus DUI or BUI arrest. I will separate DUI and BUI with the traffic stop as being traffic stop related to maybe their driver's license status. In order for them to drive in the state of Colorado, they have to have a current invalid driver's license. And so there's some pretty extreme examples when we would arrest somebody for that, likely that they're revoked. They're not supposed to be, for, for many reasons, not driving, and, and they still are choosing to do that. And then the DUI, BUI arrests coming out of that 22%. I won't go over all of them, but I'll just do the top five for this. So parks incident, again, it's that, I don't have time to explain all this, but we're at a parks incident, and there is an arrest resulting from that. And then the fifth there being assault and disturbance related. So that, that is how the call came out as an assault, either a verbal disturbance or a physical disturbance, and there's an arrest coming out of that contact. The number of arrests in 2022 was 73, 2023, 117. I can explain the big jump there being that in 2022, we were about 50% staffing level due to vacancies, injuries, FMLA, those kind of things. And though we had trainees that are doubled up, so two full-time rangers per car, we had two of those in 2023 throughout the summer, we still had quite a few numbers there. But overall, I'll say that still, the number of contacts that rangers are making, less than 1% are resulting in arrest, and we'll go into that number here shortly.
So this graph here just shows a percentage of the contacts that we're making between 2022 and 2023. Like you look at that bottom one there called Public Relations, you can see that's about 50% of this graph. So these are all what rangers are contacting people for. Public relations is really just, it's a big catch-all for anything that's not an enforcement-related thing. So that's, we're going up and talking to a camper, checking in their, into their campsite, giving them directions, asking general questions, things like that. So over 50% of our contacts or rangers are making out in the parks and open spaces are public relations. And you see right above that, just less than 20% are actually enforcement-related. So whether that's, they're being contacted for a park violation or something, a criminal violation, state, county, anything like that, which can result in anything from just a verbal warning, written warning, citation. But you see, just like Cindy said, less than 1% of our contacts actually assault, result in an arrest. But our top five there, first one is that minor in possession of alcohol or drugs. So that's the 16-year-old drinking a beer, something like that, smoking marijuana, things like that. Second one there, the personal flotation device, that's just somebody that's not wearing a life jacket when they're required to, whether that be in not having enough on their vessel or a child not wearing one. It's a big encompassing of that. Third one is no fire extinguisher, and that's required per state law in certain boats to have a fire extinguisher onboard, so safety violation there. And then number four and number five are both more like campground-related, so failing to store food and trash, and he's kind of sort of wildlife attractant, so we're not bringing those bears and mountain lions and moose down to our campsites. And then five there, a real important one for us, is unattended fires, so mainly being unattended campfires. On a different realm of that, we had some new technology this year, which has been really nice. We teamed up with the sheriff's office radio crew, set up a contract with them to replace some of our old and failing radios. Radios are super important for our division and just really all of DNR, because we don't have cell service at the places we work, and if we do, it's not enough to be able to, to get help if we need it or to relay information. Everybody from our rangers, our maintenance, A&amp;S, land acquisition, our weeds crew, all of us use radios. So this is a big improvement for us. We had some very old radios, and now with this contract we have set up with them, we're slowly but surely getting them replaced and getting new and better technology.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm just curious, I know I have, we kind of, every year kind of talk about this, or at least when I'm out and about. Are you guys able to get any AEDs on your ranger vehicles or AEDs out in the field yet, or is that still kind of a need or a wish list thing?
It's definitely a wish list thing. I know there's been some work in progress with it, but it's mainly just a cost thing with AEDs being so expensive, but it's definitely something we want to do, so.
Currently, one of our senior rangers just submitted a grant for, I think, two more AEDs that would be placed in vehicles at the reservoirs. But we do have AEDs at every one of our county facilities.
Where are they applying for the grants?
I don't know.
I would love to help support that if I can, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The realm of technology things, we also switched up our parking citations. So we used to just do the old-school paper copy parking ticket for not having a park permit, parking off-road, unattended property, things like that. We switched to this new digital system where it's all from a tablet, a small Bluetooth printer. Huge advantage with these is all of the data is stored all online, and it's all backed up on the computer side of things. So it's not just to scribble down the information and hope it's right. It's all good in the back system, back end now. It also helps with the tablets we have. There's photo proof of whatever violation it is, whether it's parked in a handicap spot, or if there's no park permit, we can get a photo evidence of that. And the paper's waterproof, which with the rains last year significantly helped.
And it's hard for us not to promote Ranger Excellence School, very proud of that as well. This will be the 14th year we're putting it on. We average about 70 students per year. I believe the sign-up last week was in the 80s. So about 900 students served over the years. We can add to the out-of-state. I know we have Arizona as well coming this year, and so we're getting, our reputation is certainly spreading out and about the local agencies, which is really who we benefit the most. State and federal has their own program of training. It's these smaller agencies that, that need a little bit of help with getting, we're all training the same information, trying to keep people safe, trying to make a professional response to the things that rangers are presented with. And so we're all trying to put our heads together to, to train our rangers the quickest way possible for these seasonal limited positions.
I'll share a story here from a rescue we had at Horse Tooth Mountain Park last year. The victim in this case, his name is David. He gave us all these notes here in letters and wanted us to share it. So I'll just kind of read this, and then I'll explain. So he sent this to us afterwards. He said, "Thank you to every individual who touched my story on Sunday and helped me get to safety, to healing, to life. From the 911 dispatch team, to the EMS team, to the rangers, to the air crew, you chose a profession to serve boldly, to help others you don't even know. You helped me, you saved my life, and I thank you with the greatest sincerity possible." If you look at this next picture here, left side there is a firefighter with Pooter Fire Authority, left side there is Ranger Bernstein. If you look way in the back there, you'll see the lifeline helicopter coming into land at Horse Tooth Mountain. The person who took this picture is David, the, the victim in this case. He was up at Horse Tooth Mountain Park. He's an avid bicyclist or mountain biker up there. He was starting to feel ill up there, realized, I think it's time to stop, called 911. Rangers were able to get up there, get first on scene with him, made contact with him through their training and medical experience, determined this is a true medical emergency, and we need to get him help. The help got there, helicopter landed, transported him to the hospital, and he survived in his fully able, full recovery. He ended up having a 95% blockage in one of his arteries. That's what happened on that date and time. While he was in the hospital, he sent us this message here. So he said, "My morning went like this. I was riding my mountain bike early and went up South Ridge, making great time. At the top, I was more, more fatigued than usual and got off my bike to walk those jumble of rocks. Little did I know, this was the beginning of something worse than I thought. I got back on and started to ride down Wathin. Something that felt like indigestion started, and I resisted throwing up. Soon, both my arms felt like they had fallen asleep and I was getting dizzy. Wathin has a way of inflicting those symptoms, but not to this degree. Two-thirds of the way down, I knew it was time to stop, and he said, 'So much for my good time.'" Yeah, so David wanted to share that story. He was very grateful for the response all around, not just rangers, but Pooter Fire, Airlink, everybody that responded dispatch that day.
All right, to brag on our camp hosts here a little bit. So our camp hosts develop relationships with our visitors that our staff, going in and out of these areas, can't. They live on-site through the summer and get to know people really well. This particular couple, this is Robert and Galen Richfield up at Pinewood Reservoir. They've been with us for several years now. Robert loved it so much, he became a ranger. So Galen is our queen of Pinewood. That is her, that is her area. She, she runs it very well. But basically, one of the relationships I wanted to highlight was Little Maisy. This is a little girl pictured in two of those photographs. Her and her family come camping every summer. That's her birthday wish is to go camping at Pinewood. She mentioned when they first met Robert and Galen that she wanted to learn how to fly fish, and so Robert's been teaching her and giving her pointers and talking about gear. And this year, when she turned 11, she came with her fancy seafoam colored waders that are pretty awesome. I will highlight, I'm going to pull up yours since I can't see my notes on this one. From our volunteer coordinator, we got some numbers as far as our camp host hours. They put in 12,864 hours in 2023. That's equivalent to 6.4 full-time employees and approximately 500,000 in wages. So we cannot do this without them, and we surely love having them and the relationships that they build. All right, so some things looking ahead that will significantly affect our division here. Chimney Hollow open space, of course. We've got some improvements for the east side of Carter coming up. Also, because of our nearly dying automatic pay stations that we have, we're trying to look at a different program to sell our permits, including license plate readers that we're trying to get implemented. We'll put out an RFP this year for that. Well, that's our presentation. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for the very excellent and detailed Visitor Services presentation. Colleagues, do you have any questions, comments, observations? We have our director coming forward. Please keep in mind, we have nine minutes left, and we have two other items that we need to address. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is personal bias of mine, and I, I have this issue, well, this thought of, either I'm in a national park- I'm in a national park, state park, or our wonderful, beautiful parks. I know you all are doing so much every day and responding to all these calls. As you know, I pick up lots of baggies of dog waste and things, and then also just wondering, when you get so many people off-trail and things, how much off-season, or do you get off on the trails enough to catch some of these folks who are doing things like climbing where they shouldn't or doing things where they shouldn't? And is that still a need? Or do you feel it's still kind of on the roads and around the water and stuff? I'm just curious about some of these trails, and I know you guys get out there as best you can, but, you know, you get way far back there and there are some interesting things. Just curious about that.
Yeah, because mainly the district I work in, being Big Thompson District, a lot of the devil's backbone. Our rangers are on-trail as much as they can be. They're just spread thin in a lot of times with how busy it is, being, having to be everywhere at once. But the big thing we have is our volunteer ranger assistants, who are volunteers through Education Department within DNR. I have a whole calendar set up where I can see when they're going to be there, and then they're out there. They're the ones that are walking back out there, talking to people when rangers can't be, and they're reporting that to us as well. So if a ranger's not out there, a volunteer ranger's out there. And if a volunteer ranger's not out there, a member of the public will definitely let us know, so.
Thank you.
Dalen, I see that you've come to the table. That means you have something to share. Would you please identify yourself for the record, then we'll see if Commissioner Stevens has anything to add. And then I really would like to move on to the next topics.
Yeah, and I'll be brief. I'm Dalen Figs, Director for Laramie County's Natural Resources Department. And I just wanted to take a moment, really, to thank Sheriff Fann and the sheriff's office for the relationship and the partnership that we have. The work that you've seen today is really a result of a longstanding partnership. They're very grateful and gracious for our work. They help us with cameras and radios and everything that we do, training. And absent that, it would be difficult for us to maintain the level of service. So just a thank you for the sheriff's office.
Thank you for that shout-out, Dalen. Appreciate that. Commissioner, anything you'd like to add?
Just want to say thank you. The breadth of work that you do is pretty remarkable, you know, when looking through these slides and with not very many people, honestly, a lot of seasonal people that have to, you know, often probably be retrained all the time. And so I'm amazed here at what you do, and I thank you for it. I've done the ride-along on the boat, and I have seen the no personal flotation devices. I didn't see a lot of action when I was out there, but that was one of the things that, and so just knowing that you, how often you interact with the public, I think that it's not just, you know, safety, but it's really, you know, welcome to our parks. This is, you know, it's just a friendly face and the knowledge that people have that support while they're there. And I just really appreciate your work, so, thank you.
Great. And also appreciative, looking forward to picking up trash with you all, I think, on Earth Day. So with that, have a good day, be well, be safe. We'll move on now to the Community Development Director's update.
Good afternoon. Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. Just a couple of quick updates for you today. First, you have two land use hearings this afternoon and this evening. There are no changes for the 3:00 PM hearing. There's just one item on the agenda, the second reading of the animal ordinance. It should be pretty quick. And then for the 6:30 hearing, we have just one discussion item on that agenda as well. And I've provided an extra copy of a comment that came in after the packet deadline last week. So you have that, and I believe it was emailed to you as well. So that's, those are kind of the updates for this afternoon.
Thank you, Rebecca. Very quickly, there were, the eight-page document that we received over the weekend, thank you for making us a hard copy. There are quite an array of questions. What is our plan for addressing those questions?
Yeah, our staff will try to address what they can in the staff presentation or the applicant as well. And then if you have additional questions, some of the comments in there may be more broader policy questions than they are specific to the application. And so we may not touch on many of those, but we're happy to answer questions that you feel are relevant to that item.
Great. Thank you. Please proceed.
Yes. Finally, my last update is just to let you know that a news release will be going out either today or tomorrow, announcing the hearings for the Thornton Pipeline 1041 permit. Our webpage is updated with information on the hearing procedures and a sign-up form for people who would like to provide public comment at either Planning Commission, Planning Commission and/or Board of County Commissioner hearings. So that information is out there and available publicly. We also dropped the postcards in the mail this morning that should be mailed out to everyone, every property owner along the proposed pipeline alignment. So word will be getting out quickly, and we look forward to getting started with those conversations in a couple of weeks.
Great. Thanks, Rebecca. Anything else? Do you have anything else?
That's it for me.
All right, we'll move on to Leslie. You have any updates for us?
Yes, just very quickly. Leslie Ellis, just a quick reminder that there's a Livermore conversation on Wednesday at 5:30 at the community hall, and especially since Sheriff Fann is here, and he or his staff will be there, along with state patrol and our engineers and folks from CDOT to talk about highway safety and some of the safety concerns that came up in general at that meeting last time around. So that's coming up. More meetings to come after that to focus on other issues around water and agricultural lands and other topics that came up. Those will most likely be in May and then July or August in the summer timeframe. So that is the only update I have for you this afternoon, so we'll get you out on time.
Thanks, Leslie. Brenda, do you have anything real quick? Great. Well done, team. At 2:28 PM, we are adjourned. And thank you, Cassidy.